Good evening and welcome to the City Council Meeting for February 14, Valentine's Day. Would you please join me in pledging allegiance to our country?
Pledging allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which we stand, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please do the roll call?
Councilmember Price.
Here.
Councilmember Adam.
Here.
Councilmember McCoy.
Present.
Councilmember Fox.
Here.
Mayor Bill Delapena.
Present. Thank you. We don't have any special presentations for today and we don't have any requests for a continuance of any public hearing or agenda item. So, we will then call for public comments, Madam Clerk.
This is a time and place for public comments. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the City Council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. All remarks should be addressed to the City Council as a whole and all documents for City Council and the official record should be presented to the City Clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Under state law, public comment matters may not be considered by the Council unless listed on the agenda, but may be referred to the City Manager for administrative follow-up. Four individuals have presented cards and pursuant to council standards, speakers are allowed three minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you. All right, our first speaker this evening is going to be Mr. J.C. Simmons, followed by Adam Haverstock and then Nick Kidway.
Good evening, Thousand Oaks and Council. I'm J.C. Simmons, resident of Newberry Park, past president of the Canoe Valley Cycle Club. I've been working actively with the city over the last 20 years or so, trying to make some... city over the last 20 years or so, trying to make Thousand Oaks a safer cycling community. I've helped write two master plans. We've got a third one coming up. After pushing for many, many years, we built Lynn Road Bike Lane. That was a tough one. And we're baby stepping forward into the future, getting Thousand Oaks safer and safer. It's much safer to ride here now than it was. But that's not why I'm here to speak tonight. Over the years, being very active, I've developed arthritis, talked to my orthopedic, got my records, went down and got a marijuana card. Okay? I'm here to talk about marijuana distribution in Thousand Oaks. I know in December, at a council meeting, it was stated that public outreach sessions were going to be set up to gather information about how the community wanted to do this, even though they voted in majority to legalize marijuana in Thousand Oaks. I've heard nothing about the schedule of when these sessions are, and that's why I'm here tonight. Currently, I have to drive, I like many residents of Thousand Oaks who have medical marijuana cards, have to drive to the valley to buy our medications. For some inexplicable reasons, there are five successful dispensaries within two blocks of the Fallbrook exit. Okay? That is money coming out of Thousand Oaks and Westlake and other communities going into Los Angeles. That does not need to be the case. Let's look at this. Let's get these public sessions open. Let's figure out how to do this correctly. Currently, there are, what, eight states that have legalized recreational marijuana? There's 26 that have legal medical marijuana. It can't be inventing a new wheel to put up policies that'll allow safe and secure distribution of marijuana here in the community. If we do this right, I'll be able to ride to my clinic to get my medications, instead of having to drive 25 miles and taking an hour out of my day just for driving, wasting the carbon, wasting the time. So, please, when are these sessions? Let's get this done, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Simmons. Adam Haverstock, followed by Nick Kidway and Joan Edwards.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Adam Haverstock. I'm the Director of Government Affairs and Tourism at the Greater Canale Valley Chamber of Commerce, here tonight to give you some updates from your chamber. First, I wanted to mention the chamber's legislative agenda. I've given copies to the City Clerk for all of you, so feel free to take a look. Spoiler alert: we haven't changed our positions on any of the major local, state, or federal issues in the last year, so it's actually the same policy positions we distributed to you last year, but we just wanted to make sure that you had a fresh copy and you were aware of where the chamber stands on several issues in our community. Second, I wanted to mention the chamber's annual awards gala is coming up next Friday, February 24th. The theme is going to be a black and white ball, so if you plan to attend, blacks, whites, mixtures thereof are the attire that would be suitable. Our Man of the Year is Ray Taylor, the City Manager of the City of Westlake Village. Our Woman of the Year is Natalie Mucie, the CEO of the Los Robles Hospital. Our Business of the Year is Sports Academy in Newberry Park, and our Nonprofit of the Year is the New West Symphony. So, some really, really wonderful individuals and organizations are going to be honored that evening, and we'd love to have as many people in attendance as possible. Tickets for that event are on sale at canaleochamber.org. The second event I'll mention for you is the Chamber's Mixpo, which is a mixer combined with a business expo that is going to be on Wednesday, March 15th, in the evening, 5:30 to 7:30, at the Agor Hills Recreation and Events Center. It is $10 for chamber members, $20 for non-members, and that does include food and wine tasting at the event. So, we'd love to have you at that event as well if you're available. You can either buy tickets at the door or buy them in advance at canaleochamber.org. And then finally, since I'm here, I thought I would give you some year-end numbers from our tourism district. We will be doing our annual report that sums up 2016 and distributing that when it's ready, but in the meantime, I have some preliminary data for you. The occupancy of our hotels in the Canale Valley was up 6.7% last year compared to 2015. That's the entire year compared to the entire prior year, and that is compared to a 0.8% increase in our competitive set, because we track ourselves compared to other neighboring areas and also to other tourism districts of like size and makeup and demographics and such. Our average daily hotel rate is up 11.4%. That's compared to an 8% in our competitive set. And finally, our RevPAR, that stat that kind of tracks TOT a little bit, was up 18.8% and that's compared to a 9.5% increase in our competitive set. So, not only are we happy that tourism is up, but we're happy that in our area, it is up a great deal compared to our competitive set, which we think is some really great results for the year, and we're excited to give you more results in 2017. Unless there are any questions, that does conclude my report this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Haverstock. Appreciate the information and the update. Nick Kidway, followed by Joan Edwards.
I begin in the name of God, who is most beneficial, most merciful. My name is Nick Iqbal Kidway. I'm a resident of Newberry Park and director of Concerned Citizens of Thousand Oaks since 1993. Honorable Mayor and Council. Light agenda, right? I just really don't understand why the love for the Boulevard. I mean, I love the Boulevard, but it's like an infatuation. It's overkill. A council member said, "Well, Amgen, CLU", even Los Robles Hospital probably. They all say to me, "We need a downtown. Where is the downtown?" And then quote Mr. Olson, who I really admired, in his logo motto of, "We need a place." We all need a place, but this is capitalism. This is the United States. Pay for it. Ask these people to make $5, $10 million contributions. Don't ask the taxpayers to fund it, especially when there's no attempt being made for the road maintenance budget, which is $10 million in the HOAC. I've been for mixed use since it was first talked about, and my wife was in Berkeley in 2006, so that's why I remember the year. And Amoryville has a beautiful mixed-use project completed. It was from dirt to two blocks, and this was 2006. And I've taken some heat from people, especially the old timers that support Concerned Citizens, completely opposed to this concept. I think because of miseducation is one of the reasons. But last night's project was a shameful project. It's very sad that it got approved by a 3-1 vote. I was very disappointed in the last meeting where a council member said this building was, and not once but twice, the ugliest building on the whole planet. I mean, you can't, I mean, I've been accused of being critical, but the building yesterday, the building for Lupe's in the front, is one of the ugliest buildings there is. And it's not the right way to start the mixed-use concept. It used to be that to appeal a planning commission hearing would be $500. Now it's $1,500. I'm willing to fork out $500 if a couple of other people, or maybe five people, some $100 bills, so that, I know probably we will lose, but at least the council people will be on record as to what they say. 25 oak trees removed. I thought that something like that had to come before the City Council, but I think that's what a special SP Plan 20 is, is that it excludes that. I call upon the citizens to do something about this. There's 10 days only that are allowed. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Joan Edwards is our last public speaker.
Good evening. I'm Joan Edwards. I live in the Thousand Oaks section of Westlake Village. Good evening, Mayor Bill Delapena and Councilmembers. I've lived here since the early '90s. I know that the process you went through to get the mixed use on the Boulevard, I know how difficult it was. I know how dear it is to many of your hearts that it happened. I know that I've attended a lot of the bid meetings, building improvement district meetings. I pay taxes. My taxes last year were $14,000 to that group. This year, it's probably more, $16,000. That's going to be my guess. So, I was a little surprised last night when I came to the hearing on the first Lupe's mixed-use project. I know how badly you want the project. You've got to start it somewhere. I know you think you need to start it right away, because it's probably taken way longer than a lot of you thought it would take. So, I think a lot of people live here because they love the trees. They love the open space. They love the rural feel of the city. It's not a hunched-together, crowded-together city. Like, I grew up in the San Fernando Valley. I know what can happen there, just one project at a time. So, I've always gone along with the idea that we need to infill our city. We don't want it to go out. I worked on SOAR. We don't want it to spread out any more than it already is. We don't want it connecting up with Camarillo or Agora. But I've hoped that we could do this without destroying our trees, especially our street trees. Now, this particular project has quite a few oak trees on it and a lot of very huge old eucalyptus and pepper trees that aren't protected at all in our city, and they will all be cut down. And they will probably, many of the oak trees will be cut down in the morning. There's a huge oak tree that will be cut down to make room for their, which I really do think it's not a very good-looking project. They'll do it in the morning when people in the city don't know what's happening. It'll just, you know, pretty soon you're driving down the street and you don't even notice that the trees are gone, because you didn't hear the chippers and the, you didn't see them being sawed down. So, I see this is going to happen. I hope that the city will take seriously the migrating birds. There's a lot of people in our city who love the birds and the squirrels. I do too. But they come through, starting in February, and they nest, and I don't have any faith, really, in people coming from the city to watch this, oversee this, to make sure that they're not doing this, cutting down a tree with a nest in it, or letting the nest just fall on the ground and, okay, there goes the little birds, too bad, or the eggs.
Mrs. Edwards, your time is up.
Okay. Thanks so much. Anyway.
Okay, that concludes public comments. We will now go to the consent, oh, yes, the City Manager. Go ahead. I know there were some questions about our first speaker.
Thank you, Mayor Bill Delapena. As it relates to Proposition 64, the Speaker is correct that we have been working on that process. As the council members know, we've had a number of kind of internal initial dialogues as it relates to setting the stage. We have an external expert who's working with cities across the state as we move through this process, and he's quite high in demand, so we've been working on scheduling his date. Looks like we may have a tentative date set for later in March. I won't give that date yet, because I want to ensure that we have it all locked up, but it is moving forward. We are actually going to incorporate a series of questions on our Community Attitude Survey this year, and we also intend to gather input electronically as well. So, we're going to have a fairly robust outreach process as it relates, and we'll make sure that we have the Speaker's information and make sure that he's informed as soon as we have those dates selected and finalized. As it relates to the final speaker's question regarding oversight of trees once the development process is in play, I can have Community Development Director Mark Town speak with that speaker to give more specifics on that. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. All right, now to the consent calendar. Any items? Mr. Price.
I'd like to pull 7L, please.
Okay, 7L, and I think for housekeeping purposes for Mr. Adam, perhaps 7N as well? So, we can move the remainder of the calendar. Who would like to do that? Don't forget to push the button if anyone wants to.
Madam Mayor, I believe we have one public speaker?
Oh, yes, we do. Mr. Nick Kidway.
Nick Kidway, resident of Newberry Park. I thought this new fancy system was supposed to eliminate that need for the clerk to prompt, which has been going on for 25 years, because I wish I didn't have to speak on the consent calendar, but it will be, I guess I'll be six feet under the ground when that happens. This is a very light meeting, so I don't understand why so many things are being put in the consent when you need to burn time and make that as a report. I'm also disappointed that even though you are pulling a couple of things, items, but Mr. George Alton Ginnis, $50,000 contribution to the library, and I'm proud of our library, is not being recognized by the Council. I don't understand. I mean, maybe something is wrong with me that I think differently than the majority. I want to address the grand jury report regarding the expenditure report. I want to thank the City Clerk for responding to my email. Very nice gesture on her part, and I do appreciate that the clerks do work hard and try to do their best. But I was involved in the late '90s when we made the changes and we were ahead of our time compared to the other cities and put the donations on the website. And even though the clerks are trying to their best to put the names, but if I can say the word, the rascals, politicians, they are always trying to stay one step ahead. And one of the main things that politicians or council people or others want to avoid is the linkage of the contribution to special interests and projects. And so, a lot of these people, or a few of these people, they give the donation, but they don't write that they affiliated with a company. And of course, they don't mention that they will have a project coming in next year. I don't know what the solution for that is, except for the newspapers to do their job, but they're not doing their job, so there is no easy solution. If I might say so, one of the problems in this endeavor is that the website has, it's worse than 1998 right now. I mean, we have TOTV. I asked for it. Try to find the TOTV. I mean, it's, the search function doesn't work. It's, need to look at it, get some citizens involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. Okay, so we have the consent calendar, with the exception of items N and L. Would anyone like to move the remainder of the calendar? And that would be Mr. Adam.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll move the remainder of the consent calendar.
Please vote.
That motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Item 7L, Mr. Price.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to pull that so that I could shine a light on what Mr. Kidway just alluded to. And for the record, I did pull that, because I think it is important that we recognize the generous contribution of Mr. George J. Altonji, who wrote a check and mailed it off to the City of Thousand Oaks Library Department in the amount of $50,422.08. Now, how that figure was arrived at, I don't know, but along with it was a very nice letter thanking the city for all of the books that he has read over the years. And while we had hoped to have him here to be recognized this evening, we haven't heard back from him yet. So, if we do, we will certainly bring him down here and recognize him publicly for that rather generous donation. Thank you. And with that, I would move approval of that item.
Thank you, Mr. Price, for your very nice comments regarding this wonderful donation. Appreciate that. All right, no further comments on 7L, then please vote.
That motion carries 5-0.
And then, item 7N is really just for housekeeping purposes. It was a 4-1 vote, and if there's someone who would like to, I don't see the red little flag. Well, go ahead then and make the motion. Well, you voted against it, so for housekeeping reasons, you probably want to vote against it again. Okay. Yeah, Mr. Price, go ahead and make the motion.
Thank you. I will move Item 7N as well.
Please prepare for the vote.
That motion carries 4-1 with Councilmember Adam DeSenti.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And we now move to our first department report, Number 9A, a very exciting report regarding the Westlake Boulevard sidewalk project. And this will be presented by our Engineering Division Manager, Nader Hedyari. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. Hope to be as exciting as hoped, as promised. We're here tonight to provide a department report on the Westlake Boulevard sidewalk project and receive, provide a project update and receive council input and comment. The project location, as you're all aware, is on Westlake Boulevard within Caltrans right-of-way, predominantly south of the 101 freeway down to Triunfo Canyon Road. It consists of adding about three-quarters of a mile of sidewalk and striping of green bike lanes and other associated bicycle and pedestrian improvements. There's also a portion of the project that extends just north of the freeway, but it's predominantly the portion south of the freeway. Here's a few images of the existing condition at hand there with high usage of bicycle, pedestrian, and joggers, and a lack of sidewalk on both sides of the street. We presented the project through extensive public outreach to the community, and this captured some of that. In fact, some of the outreach started before the initiation of the full project, which included letters and from local residents, cycling groups, and Caltrans to provide us with the support we needed to obtain the grant to help fund the project. And that outreach has continued through the design phase through the, through various means, including a community information meeting that we had in October 2015 where we gathered input, and many other means and methods that we've employed to obtain input on the project from various commissions and boards. Also, there's been targeted outreach to the HOAs, which the project is, which are adjacent to the project or along the course of the project. And we've had numerous meetings with them and been in close contact and communication with them throughout the process, throughout 2016 and into 2017. And through the course of that, we've been able to obtain their support for one of the two alternatives that is being proposed. So in general, there's two alignments that were possible with this project. Alignment Number One was to put the sidewalk in a traditional manner, right behind the curb, which keeps it as far, as close to the street as possible and minimizes the amount of property that it's going into in terms of the private parcels. However, that alternative has a couple of drawbacks. One of them is it had a substantial tree impact with 14 trees to be removed. And also, for the pedestrians, it may not give them as much separation from a street that has rather higher speeds than the normal. Alternative Number Two on the alignment, which was the preferred strategy through the course of all the output and outreach that we had conducted, was to do a meandering sidewalk as in every location possible. And this helps to save six trees, and the tree impact is reduced, actually, it helps save eight trees, not six. And so the total tree removal will be 16 instead of the 14. And the, all those removals will be offset by new plantings, and the drafted plan at this moment has 29 new trees to be planted at a 3:1 ratio or better, and some of those species are listed there at the bottom, and they will be planted in various locations along the project itself, particularly in areas that are kind of, are devoid of any treescape at the moment. As I mentioned earlier, the collaboration and support from the HOAs ultimately helped us to make Alternative Number Two a reality. And here's an image depicting the primary four HOAs that are along the east portion of the project limits between Agora Road and Triunfo Canyon. And this depicts the strategy that we're going to be able to employ. Starting from the south end, the yellow one, Westlake Bay HOA, we are able to obtain an easement from them to meander the sidewalk in a few locations, limited locations. They have a very narrow parkway there between the street and their fencing, so the full meandering of the sidewalk and the other associated elements weren't going to be incorporated in the majority of that parcel, but in a few locations, we're able to go around some existing trees, and that goes into their private property, which they're working with us on to obtain that easement. In the blue portion, the smallest parcel there is Westlake Lake Management Association. And that location, because of how small the parcel is and then our discussions with that association, we've decided to go in a more straight manner in that limited stretch and then resume the meandering and the other associated elements as we get into the Northshore and Village Glen HOAs, both of which have already signed the easements and given us everything we need to move forward on their properties. That's where we're going to be beginning a separate jogging trail that would be constructed alongside the sidewalk. It's kind of a dual-use trail along with a couple of benches with a view of the lake. Those are all possibilities with the Alignment Number Two strategy. Just a few images depicting what I was discussing, a little bit more detail. On the left-hand side of the image is that portion of the Westlake Lake Management Association, which we're going to be staying within the right-of-way and continuing with the traditional sidewalk. And as soon as we pass that parcel, then we enter the Northshore, is where we're going to be picking up the separate jogging trail and the meandering sidewalk elements, continuing all the way to Agora Road. This is the continuation of that extending all the way to Agora Road. This is one of the more highly-traveled portions of the whole project in terms of bicyclists and pedestrians. When the project then passes Hampshire and goes north toward Townsgate, the missing sidewalk is currently on the west side of the street. And that's where it's on the, this image depicts, that's where on the commercial properties, and their sidewalk elements are depicted in yellow here. We're also working to incorporate a bus stop, bus turnout there to allow the existing buses, which a couple dozen times a day stop in the traffic lanes on Westlake Boulevard partially. And so we're trying to create a design that allows them to get out of the traffic lane. This is, north of Townsgate, between the freeway and Townsgate, and in the green is the new proposed tree plantings to fill in some missing areas that are currently not planted. So some of the London plane trees are being proposed, are being depicted there. Lastly, some of the other associated pedestrian amenities here is the helping people cross the 101 northbound on-ramp, which is, could be improved, and this would, this project would realize that by providing them a safer method to cross the on-ramp there. The project costs and funding are listed here, and there's a combination, as I mentioned, of federal grant and city funds. The remaining milestones of the project are the completion of the design and the completion of the acquisition of the right-of-way easements would be taking place this month, followed by our final approval process with Caltrans to obtain the encroachment permit, get the final federal funds obligated, and then enter the bid process and construction phase. We hope to return in this fall with the authorization to bid and the contract award at that time. The recommendations are in the staff report, and staff's available to receive comments and questions from the council.
Thank you, Mr. Hedyari. This is indeed exciting news. Really appreciate staff's work with the various HOAs. We would have loved to get all four, but we got three, and they were the most important ones. And I want to publicly thank those three HOAs that worked with the city to help create this project, which will be a benefit to the entire community. And the HOAs, as you mentioned, are Westlake Bay, Northshore HOA, as well as Village Glen. So a big thank you to the boards of those HOAs and their attorneys for working with our city attorney's office, Mrs. Noonan and others, on actually coming together and finally having this come to fruition. So this is very exciting. All right, I don't think we have any speakers, so are there any questions? Okay, let's see. Mr. Adam.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, as most of us know, jogging around Westlake Lake is a very popular thing to do, which I used to do. And once you hit Westlake Boulevard, many of the joggers, because there are no sidewalks, run in the bike lane. So I go to work early, 5:30 in the morning, and you know, it's pitch dark and there's joggers in the bike lane. It's potentially very hazardous. So if I got this right, we're going to have a meandering sidewalk, and right next to it will have the DG path that the joggers can now use. Is that correct?
In portions that we, that was feasible and we're able to do, to the maximum extent possible, we are doing that. And that's shown in these few slides here, yes.
All right, that'll be good.
Yes.
Yeah, I kind of cringe sometimes when I see those joggers out there in the pitch dark. Some of them wear lights, which is good, but, so this will be a nice alternative, make the boulevard safer. Thank you.
Mr. Price?
I have a motion. No questions.
I don't think there are any questions, or the comment that I would like to make before you make your motion is simply that, as Mr. Adam stated, this has been a big, big safety issue, seeing not only the joggers, but also the mothers pushing their strollers, as well as some disabled persons on their motorized scooter in that, in that bike lane. I, it's scary to see that. And I'm just so glad that staff worked so well with all of the stakeholders, starting in 2015 with community groups or workshops. I really appreciate that, Mr. Finley. Appreciate that very much. So, Mr. Price?
Thank you. And as a cyclist, and I know that if J.C. Simmons were still here, he would echo my comments. That's one of the loops I like to ride, and it would be nice not having to compete for that bike lane with the joggers, walkers, strollers, all of that. So it is definitely a huge public safety improvement. And with that, I would move staff recommendations to receive the report, I guess, one through three. That'll work.
All right, then, Madam Clerk, please prepare us for a vote.
The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you so much. Again, a big thank you to staff and everybody who worked on it, including the city attorney's office. So thank you. All right, and of course, finance. Thank you, Mr. Adams. All right. We now move to Item 9B, which is the appointment that we will be discussing of two council members to a downtown revitalization ad hoc committee. And let me see who will do this. This will be done by Mr. Mark Towne, our Community Development Director. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. As you recall, at your last meeting, staff as well as consultants from the Cosmont Companies provided an update regarding the downtown revitalization study. And this concept, again, just to quickly summarize, looks at trying to create a village concept in our core downtown area between Erbs Road and Cane Hill School Road, focusing on pedestrian connectivity, vehicular connections, all the way from the west side of this area to the lakes on the east, and of course, including this cultural arts complex in between. At that meeting, one of the concepts discussed was the creation of an ad hoc council subcommittee to look at this area in greater detail, to meet with staff and meet with other stakeholders in the community, and bring concepts and recommendations back to the full council for your consideration. So at this time, staff would like to recommend that the council establish an ad hoc committee that would be titled the Ad hoc Council, City Council Downtown Revitalization Committee, comprised of two council members to meet with staff and stakeholders regarding this concept. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Towne. We do have one public speaker, and I know that Mr. Price has a question. Would you like to ask him? No? All right, then we will call, we will call Mr. Nick Kidway.
Nick Kidway, resident of Newberry Park, director of Concerns at the City of Thousand Oaks. Somehow, the staff is also leaving this kimpie meeting. Honorable Mayor, when will this city's love affair to the boulevard be over? I guess, never, so long as there's some free money available. There are at least a dozen studies paid for by the taxpayers, and yours truly has read almost, I think, all of them, except the boulevard plan, which I just got too tired. To develop an unneeded downtown, this may have made some sense when we had quote-unquote "free money." But the redevelopment agency has been gone for two years now. Money is in short supply. And yet, the council seems to behave as if it's business as usual. Let's party on. Very sad, especially when those who ran as taxpayer advocates have become the biggest cheerleaders for this tax-waste, unneeded project. I'm a Democrat. I am accused, and our party is accused of big government and getting involved in things that are not necessary, that belong in the preview of the private sector. I, for the life of me, cannot understand why this, these plans are not being abandoned and let the Chamber of Commerce, let the business people handle it. In fact, the biggest, you just go round from Moor Park Road to Westlake Boulevard and look at the buildings, the biggest improvements and changes have been done by businesses on their own, without any government help. Prime example is to make a, get out here and make a left tube complexes across the street. They were done in the last few years. And in a way, what this entails is increasing the rents by 30% to 50%. And that's not really in the interest of anybody, except a few landlords. Only 30 seconds left, so I will just, the main reason I am speaking is that these committees are, I had a mentor, Robert Murray, I forgot his name, and I just remembered, and a couple of other people that helped me learn the ropes in the '80s and '90s. And to get anything done, you need three votes out of, on a council of five. And if you have two people on a committee, it becomes their baby. All you need is one more person, and then, in the interest of unity, you will get one or two more and become unanimous. It's a scandal, really, to have these, it should be really against the law to have these committees, because you're conducting the people's business away from the public eye.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. Okay, let's see. Mr. Price?
Thank you. I know that I got a little bit ahead of myself at our last meeting when I suggested a couple of council members to serve on this committee, but apparently, this is the appropriate time to do it. And so I would renew my, what would have been a motion of last meeting, and suggest that council members Adam and Mayor Protem Fox, who served on our last ad hoc committee that dealt with issues surrounding the Thousand Oaks Boulevard specific plan, I think that, given all of the history that the two of them have, I think that it would serve us well to have them shepherd us through this, this process. And adding to that, I would also... And adding to that, I would also suggest that we get periodic reports back from them. When I say periodic, I think every other month, if there's something newsworthy to report, perhaps even sooner than that, because I think we would like to stay involved in it as a council, but obviously, those sorts of reports would have to be agendized. So, I have to disagree with the previous speaker, who suggested that this is conducting business outside of the public. It's really not. It is simply facilitating the process here, and I think it's important that we do that so that we can move things along. Any decisions that are made will still go through the Planning Commission. Actually, I guess they will come before the council and/or the Planning Commission. And I think we've already set in motion a process that will ensure transparency. So, that would be my motion, that we appoint Mr. Adam and Mayor Protam Fox to this ad hoc committee.
Thank you, Mr. Price. We have a motion to appoint Mayor Protam Fox and Councilmember Al Adam to the Downtown Revitalization Ad hoc Committee. Both members of the council also served on the ad hoc committee to revise elements of the process affecting Thousand Oaks Boulevard specific plan. I don't know how otherwise to word it. Is there any objection to the nomination? Okay, very good. I'm glad that you mentioned, Mr. Price, periodic updates, because I believe that that is important to get input or feedback from the committee, so that the rest of the council may be able to weigh in before a final product or proposal comes before the council. So, definitely, updates will be very encouraged, very much encouraged. I would also like to throw out the importance of the implementation of gray water use on Thousand Oaks Boulevard, and also to include other stakeholders in reference to the environmental sensitivity, so that we have feedback from a variety of stakeholders. And also, and Ms. Noonan, correct me if I'm wrong, the ad hoc committee is open to the public, is it not?
An ad hoc committee is exempt from the Brown Act, but you know, there's nothing that prevents the committee itself from advertising at any given time. It's not required to by law.
Okay, so it's not that we're conducting business really behind closed doors, so there is some, there is transparency. All right, would the others who have been nominated like to weigh in? Mr. Fox?
Sure, I just thank the council for their confidence. I'm waiting for Mr. Adam to start whining about another committee, but I'll let him do that. Just to the mayor's point, when we had our previous ad hoc committee, we did get public testimony. People would come to the meetings, and so that was not uncommon. And the second point is, unlike the Alliance for the Arts project that Mr. Adam and I worked on, which required a lot of confidentiality because of the nature we're dealing with, this is actually a welcome change, where we will be making periodic reports back to the council. So, everybody's fully briefed on where we're at with the process, and we'll be checking in by design frequently with the council.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Adams.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I too appreciate the confidence in both of us on this committee. I think this council has embraced the village concept, and we're at the implementation stage right now. And it's essential that with all these parcels, we have compatibility and connectivity, so we can build the kind of downtown that I think we're all looking for. And I think Mayor Protam Fox and I are very well, very aware of that, and we're looking for absolutely high-quality projects that will achieve that. And we also have the infrastructure projects to look at as well. So, it's another area. And so, again, I thank you for your confidence, and we will certainly report back to the council on a regular basis, because you know, this is one of the top priorities, and everybody needs to know what's going on. And we'll be sure to include your comments in as well, Mayor.
Thank you. I forgot inclusionary housing. That's another one that I think is important. I just want to get it on the record. All right, so we have a motion to nominate Mayor Protam Fox and Councilmember Al Adam to serve on the Downtown Revitalization Ad hoc Committee. Can you please prepare us for a vote?
That motion carries 5-0.
Thank you so much. Onto item number 10A, which is a Planning Commission appointment by Councilmember Adam.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Should I talk about my traffic commissioner as well? Do them both at the same time?
First, we do the Planning Commission, then we will do your Traffic and Transportation Commission.
All right. Well, first of all, I want to thank all the folks that submitted applications for the Planning Commission seat. I appreciate the effort and time that you went to. I read every one of them, very well-qualified bunch of people, and again, thank you. However, my planning commissioner, Doug Nichols, I believe, has earned another four years. He has done an excellent job, works hard, very well-prepared, good knowledge about land use policy, and I'm very proud to reappoint him for four years, and very grateful that he accepted the reappointment, because let me tell you, being a planning commissioner is a lot of work, and it's really unheralded many times. So, Doug, if you're out there listening, thank you, and thank you for being willing to serve another four years.
Okay, are there any comments or questions regarding the nomination by Mr. Al Adam to the Planning Commission? No? Then please prepare us for a vote.
That motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Adam, your Traffic and Transportation Advisory Commission appointment.
Thank you, Mayor. And as I said prior to this about the planning commissioners, I appreciate everyone that applied for the Traffic Commission, and I read all your resumes as well. It just goes to show you how many people want to be involved in the city of Thousand Oaks. But I have decided to reappoint Dr. Michael Reader as my Traffic Commissioner. He's done a fine job for the first four years, and he'll do a fine job for the next four. Mike is an innovator. I hope most of you know that the blinking yellow lights in our left-turn signals right now are the result of Dr. Reader's research and recommendation, and we have, I believe, five in the city now, and we're about to put another five in. They've been very well-received, and you can thank Mike Reader for that. He's an innovator. He's always looking to make traffic flow better in the city of Thousand Oaks, and he's going to make a fine Traffic Commissioner. And Mike, thank you for willing to serve another four years.
Thank you, Mr. Adam. We have a motion on the floor. Can you please prepare us for a vote?
That motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. And now, we go to item 10C, Traffic and Transportation Advisory Commission appointment. Councilmember McCoy?
I'm putting forward Tom Gregory again. He did a great job. My intention was to continue with him, as I had an abbreviated term, and so did he, and I wanted to give him a full term. And he's done a great job, and so I'm moving forward with Tom.
Thank you. Can you please prepare us for a vote?
That motion carries 5-0.
Thank you very much. 10D, your Planning Commission appointment, Mr. McCoy.
I had every intention of staying with Mr. Jeff Alexander. I'd actually told the clerk that I wanted to go with Jeff, and shortly after that decision, Jeff informed me that due to some health issues of a family member, it's going to require his time. He needs to step aside. So, like Councilmember Adam, I'd gone through all the applications, and one kept rising to the top. Really liked him. Don Lanson interviewed him, just loves our open space, wonderful man, lives in Newberry Park, which kind of balances it with West Lake, Thousand Oaks, Newberry Park. He has a great background as an attorney with real estate law, which will be highly helpful with what the city's going to be going through. And good family, sons in law, or excuse me, sons in medical school, his daughter's in law school at Pepperdine. Great guy, had the chance to meet him, and I think he's going to do a great job for the city. So, I am putting forward Don Lanson.
Thank you very much. We have nomination for Don Lanson. I would like to say for the record that I will abstain from this vote, and I would like to explain why. Mr. Lanson is a partner in Manfredi Levine, and Manfredi, we know, is a major property owner on T.O. Boulevard. And so, the Planning Commissioner will be hearing several projects probably that will be coming before the Planning Commission. And I'm of the, from the perspective, that any appearance of a conflict of interest is a conflict, and this is nothing personal, and I apologize, but my husband works with a hospital, for example, and I recused myself from voting on the expansion of Los Robles because of my husband's involvement with the hospital, even though, per the city attorney, I didn't need to do that. So, given that Thousand Oaks Boulevard specific plan is on the top of our agenda, and we will be hearing crucial projects, not only before the council, but especially the Planning Commission, I feel that having a partner who is from a law firm and has a partner with a financial stake, I feel that I have to abstain. I don't want to vote against you, because I've never done this before, but nonetheless, I wish you good luck, and so, I hope that I explained my abstention. All right?
Madam Mayor, I'd request to speak if I could.
Yes, Mr. McCoy.
I wanted to say, I understand completely.
Rob and I talked about it, so it doesn't catch him by surprise.
No, and I like the idea, especially for the citizens of the community, that every Planning Commissioner, every city council member is to be put on notice that we're servants of the city. And I know that Mr. Lanson will not get in the way of that, and if the attorney, the city attorney feels as though he has to recuse himself, that would be more than fine. And so, I just want to say thank you. I have no ill will towards that, and I understand completely.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So, all right, Mr. Fox?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Also, just a comment, Councilmember McCoy mentioned that Commissioner Alexander is stepping down. And as I commented when Jeff was appointed, Jeff has been a personal friend for, you know, going on 25 years now, back to the Planning Commission. I think for most people in the community, you recognize Jeff was a frequent outspoken critic of the boulevard plan, going back many, many years. He runs a business on the boulevard, and one, I think we're all disappointed that Jeff was not going to be able to continue his service on the commission. But that evening, I commented that regardless of Jeff's personal view, I always knew that his integrity and his balance and his fairness would never be questioned on the commission. And while I don't know Mr. Lanson like I know Mr. Alexander, I think that to restrict folks from serving on commissions where there's no legal conflict is unnecessary. And that's why we have a city attorney, that's why we pay attention to strict adherence to not only the technical legal aspects, but also the California League of Cities requirements for balancing ethics in government for our commissions and our city council folks. And I have every confidence that Mr. Lanson will exercise good judgment, and that there is no conflict, legal or otherwise, and that he will serve on our commission just as well as Mr. Alexander did, who also, again, runs a business on the boulevard. So, I'm going to be happy to support Mr. McCoy's nominee.
Thank you. Mr. Price?
Yes, thank you. I think I said this, since we're going back to when Mr. Alexander was appointed, I know that I said it then, and I'll say it again. Mr. Fox, you brought up League California Cities, and I would encourage any Planning Commissioner who is stepping into that role, or even those who might be on there now and haven't attended, the League California Cities Planning Commissioner, I want to call it institute, thank you, I was going to call it college, but institute. It is very, very worthwhile, gives you some really good advice on, and certainly, to keep you out of legal trouble and to keep the city out of problems, too. So, I would encourage you, Mr. Lanson, to make time to attend that. I think it might even be coming up very shortly, so maybe as soon as March or April. But with that, I would be supportive of this as well.
Thank you, Mr. Price. If I could just say one more thing with Mr. Alexander, he was wonderful, and I think he did recuse himself, even though he didn't need to, when one of the cases came before the Planning Commission. That is what I mean, is recusing yourself, even though it's legally not necessary, because you do want to avoid some sort of appearance. So, while legally on solid ground, perception is important, and that's really the only reason why I am abstaining tonight. So, I'm sure you will do well, and I wish you good luck, and congratulations. All right, please prepare for a vote.
Motion carries 4-0 with Mayor Bill DeLaPena abstaining.
Thank you. Now to item 12, and that is the compensation for our city manager. Let me see here, that is Mr. Gary Rogers, our deputy city manager.
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, on January 10th, you appointed Andrew Powers, the city manager. At that time, you appointed the mayor and Mayor Protam to serve as a negotiating team to work with Mr. Powers and prepare the terms and conditions of his employment and prepare a new contract. Before you tonight is Mr. Powers' contract, his employment agreement. It sets forth his salary and related benefits. His base salary remains unchanged at $230,772, and staff is certainly available to answer any questions you might have regarding the item before you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rogers. We do have a public speaker, and that is Mr. Nick Kidway. Yeah, Mr. Nick Kidway.
Nick Kidway, resident of Newberry Park, director concerned, citizen of Thousand Oaks. I wish I didn't have to speak, and there were other people, because many people feel the same way, but for whatever reason, don't come to the meeting, I don't want to speak. I've been speaking on this issue since the 90s, and I feel really badly that, it's not supposed to be something personal, but there is a giant in our community, Mr. Brimhall, and I opposed some of his raises, and he has not forgotten that, and he does not talk to me, yeah, and I feel bad about that. Like I've said, and other people have said, it's, city manager's position is a glorified administrative, administrator's position. It does not really require any civil engineering degree or law degree or acting performance. We have the theater here. A good administrator, and it's basically a political position. And we're so disappointed in relieving the last city manager for the wrong reasons on a unanimous vote after a six-hour discussion. People say, "Don't bring that up, that's old history," but if you don't learn from history, we are going to repeat it again. What is needed is leadership from elected officials, because one of, two of the issues facing our state and our nation is, one is high compensation of CEOs in the private sector, as well as upper management in government. And the second thing is the retirements, which are completely unfunded and is going to break the back of this nation. These need to be handled on a regional or national basis, and it was mentioned about League of Cities, et cetera. That's where people like you folks need to take the leadership and do away with the system of staff coming up with recommendations and showing other cities or other management people making X amount of money and saying, "Well, we need to raise the salary over here." I mean, that's completely bogus, wrong approach, and... And that's one of the reasons we are in such hot water. At least, and today, we are not really raising the city manager's salary too much, but the 12% for the 401K kind of government sector is way out of line. I mean, nobody that I know of makes that kind of money in the private sector and after all, the people in the private sector are paying the bills.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. Mr. Adam?
Yeah, just a comment if I may. Most of you know that Mr. Powers was elevated to our interim city manager due to a series of events and now he's been promoted to our city manager. And when he was promoted to interim city manager, his salary was adjusted modestly according to that move. Now, Mr. Powers, to his credit, has accepted an unchanged base salary from when he was city manager, far below where we were with the prior city manager. I think that speaks a lot to his integrity and his commitment to the city and to his regard for the city and their residents and the taxpayers. And I want to thank him for that and I also want to thank him for being our city manager. I know you're doing a great job and you'll continue to do so.
Mr. Fox?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For the council's information, if you had a chance to review the city manager's new contract, the mayor and I did work with the, with Mr. Rogers to make some fairly significant changes in the areas where council would want to part ways with the city managers. I think council can appreciate, we've run into these challenges in, in the past. And I think the changes that Ms. Bill DeLa Penia and I placed in for the council's review is, gives the council much greater latitude to deal with issues if they should come about that would be much more consistent with, I think, how the public would expect a public agency to respond to, not just an executive, but really any employee. And so that was something that we had an opportunity to actually improve the contract language to, I think, reflect the standards of the community and certainly the council if issues come about later on down the road. And so I just wanted to call that attention to the council.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. As Mr. Fox and I were on the committee who negotiated the contract with our new city manager, I would like to say as well that it was Mr. Powers himself who requested that his salary not be adjusted. And as Mr. Adam said, that really speaks to his integrity. I was quite surprised when, when he made that announcement. And yes, he led us through a, after this series of very unfortunate events, he led us through a rather smooth transition. And the contract, as Mr. Fox stated, has been adjusted, has been corrected and revised so as to basically not have a repeat of past events. And with that, I would like to thank Mr. Powers for stepping forward, rolling up his sleeves, not wanting an adjustment. And I think that is wonderful, makes our job easier. And we'll await a motion by perhaps Mr. Fox, since you were with me on the committee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would move the approval for the compensation employment agreement for city manager Drew Powers and certainly would echo the comments of the other council members. There is no question in, in my mind, our mind, that we got the right person for the, for the job at the right time. And I'm confident Mr. Powers will serve this city very well in years to come.
Mr. Adam, did you want to say something?
I will certainly support the motion. And as I said, I'm very impressed with Mr. Powers' conduct so far and his regard for the City of Thousand Oaks.
And his high level of ethics, very much appreciated.
That as well, thank you.
All right, then, please prepare us for a vote.
That motion carries 5-0.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Powers may now rejoin us because you are up next for your follow-up items and announcements of upcoming issues.
Thank you, Mayor Bill DeLa Penia, and thank you all for the very kind words. As I've said before, I'm extremely humbled and honored and I am going to do my best to serve this city for years to come. Just a quick follow-up, that our next city council meeting will be held on the 28th of February. I currently have two items. First is a study session on our user fees that will be conducted by John Adams and our finance department. And then we will have a public hearing, the codification of, the formal codification of our MCAO marijuana and commercial marijuana activities. I just want to stress that this is different from the workshop component that will be held. This is simply the next step in following up on council's action from late last year that keeps things status quo as it relates to marijuana and commercial marijuana activities until the council has an opportunity to define how things are going to be moving forward with the January 1st implementation of the, of Proposition 64. So that is it for right now. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much. Madam City Attorney?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have three closed session matters tonight. The first one is conference with legal counsel on existing litigation, claim of Joyce Lombard, claim 1339-2006 pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9A. Second matter is existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9A, claimant Juan Cervantes, workers' compensation claim number 100780. And the final one is conference with real property negotiators for properties 1850 East Thousand Oaks Boulevard, 81 Oakwood Drive and 145 Oakwood Drive. City negotiators, Andrew Powers, city manager, John Adams, finance director, Hader Alawami, economic development manager, and Larry Cosmont, Cosmont Companies. Negotiating parties, 226 Montgomery LLC. Under negotiation, purchase of property including price and terms of payment pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8. It is unlikely I will have anything to report.
Thank you very much, Ms. Noonan. We don't have any public notices. This will bring us to our adjournment and this adjournment will be shared between myself and Council, Mayor Protem Andy Fox. As many of you may have heard, Frances Prince died on February 6th at the age of 79. So we are adjourning tonight's city council meeting in memory of Frances. Frances was an integral part of our city's history and she helped shape our community to where we are today. After moving to the Conejo Valley in 1968, she served as president of Wildwood Park Homeowners Association. She led an effort that ended in 19 acres of land being gifted to the park district that is now Wildflower Playfield. Frances was elected to the city council in 1976 and she served until 1984. She served two terms as mayor from 1978 and '79, and once again, from 1983 to 1984. Prior to the council, she served on the city's Planning Commission from 1972 to 1975. Frances was not only the first woman on the city council, but she was also the very first woman to serve as mayor. She blazed a path to public office that has been shared by seven other women, including Matt Schaefer, Judy Lazar, Alois Zina, Jamie Sokowski, Linda Parks, Jackie Irwin, and myself. Frances was a true pioneer in designing the city's general plan and was part of the original 100-person citizen committee creating the plan. Frances was the founding chairwoman of the Conejo Open Space Conservation Agency in 1978 and she chaired the directors board of the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy from 1980 to 1984. As a member of the Santa Monica Mountains Planning Commission, she worked toward the purchase of the Danielson Ranch, which is part of an area now known as Rancho Sierra Vista. And I would like to add that last Wednesday, COSCA, which is a joint powers agency between the park district and the city, announced that we are entering into an agreement with a donation of 82 acres by the Rasnell family to close that missing link that Frances envisioned many, many years ago. So I think the timing was just perfect. So Frances had a long promoted, had long promoted the arts and volunteer community organizations and nonprofits. She served as executive director of Senior Concerns for 10 years, playing a pivotal role in 19, in the 1992 construction of Senior Concerns Fitzgerald Center. Frances spearheaded the campaign to construct the Civic Arts Plaza and pushed to have the Thousand Oaks Brimhall Library built. She was also a director on boards, including the City Library Foundation, Cal Lutheran University, Los Robles Bank, and Thousand Oaks Regional Chamber of Commerce. Frances is survived by her brother, three children, and several of you are here this evening in the audience, four grandchildren, and she was preceded in death by her husband, Harv. Frances Prince was truly the mother of the community and she will be greatly missed by her family, many friends, and city colleagues. Mr. Fox?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Going back to 1989, I first met Frances. She was on the interview committee for my position on the Planning Commission. So I often give credit to Bob Lewis for giving me an opportunity to serve in the community, but truth be told, it was Frances and Micah Gopian who were on this interview committee. So Frances and I go back personally to my very first service with the City of Thousand Oaks. I had opportunity to visit Frances a couple of times over the last month or so. And I was struck, while she was dealing with obviously a, towards, coming towards the end of her life, in our visits, we just shared a wide range of discussions from family to travel to certainly the city, different personalities. And I was just struck that through all her years of city service and community service and civic involvement, Frances maintained such an outstanding sense of grace. Anybody that knew her would see that in her. And not just grace, but a classic grace. She had tremendous intellect, as Claudia talked about, tremendous vision for this community. We often talk about Alex Fiori with respect to his vision. Frances is right there with Mr. Fiori with respect to many programs, many things that we all take for granted here today in Thousand Oaks, that Frances was the visionary behind that. And did it all with a tremendous sense of humor, just, just a really, really great sense of humor and her outlook on life. And I know God has blessed her, blessed her family and she truly is an icon for our community.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. A true pillar of our community. So our deepest sympathies are with you through this difficult time. And with that, we are adjourned until February 28th. Have a good evening.